Recording in progress.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call us to order. Today is the latest installment of our budget hearings. So, I think, yeah, what we had first was maybe a review of any updates that were made, and then I think we're gonna get into the resiliency draft again.
So, we are still working off of the February 28th version. It's on Monday night's agenda to adopt the 26th budget, and that will incorporate all of the changes that we've discussed up to today, and then including today.
How did you wanna handle, have people already sent you questions, or do you want, how did you wanna handle?
No, so where we are is, again, reviewing the proposed revenue recommendations, these increases, and getting feedback from council on whether they need to be included. There's more discussion, continuing discussion of the resiliency fund, and then reviewing expenditures.
Comments from the table? Any comments from the table?
I guess just an overall question. So, total, the amount of increase from last year to this year is how much?
So, the revenues, not taking into account transfers, the revenues are increasing 10.55 percent, and that's including all of the revenue, proposed revenue changes. And expenditures are increasing 13.38 percent, all funds.
What was that last number, please, I'm sorry, is there?
13.38. This is on version 28 of your budget, February 28th.
And that does not include, does that include the resiliency?
Yes.
Okay, so that is included, okay.
Yes.
When you say include resiliency, what does it include? What, how much?
1.111 million in expenditures, which is really putting it into reserves, but it's showing $20,000 being funded. It does not show the seed money, because those are transfers. So, the seed money is-
I'm sorry, I'm confused. We have over a million dollars dedicated to resiliency?
So, we have funded-
But not, but not the seed money?
Let's look at page 30.
Page, page 30, 228.
The 1.1 million includes the one-time seed from transfer, the one-time, I'm sorry, the annual contribution of 10 percent of the transfer tax money at 300,000, and it includes the property tax, the GRRT, and the parking meter revenues from the general fund at 416-800.
So, this all goes to one point, adds up to 1.1 million?
Correct.
And that's in this, this 2026 budget? So, but that's not the seed money?
It does include, as has said, the one-time transfer-
But what's the, what's the seed money?
375 from the transfer tax.
So, what is the rest of the money for?
The 300,000 from the 10 percent of the transfer tax.
Now, what's it for? What is it going to? I thought the first year we were gonna have seed money, and then succeeding years, it would be funded by what you're suggesting, you know, property tax assessment, short-term rental, and other fees.
So, the seed is the 375,000 from transfer tax.
75 transfer.
It's also the Chesapeake money that's been collected, which is about 300,000.
So, we're at 675, it's there.
And then we get into the annual contributions.
Based on FY '25 actuals.
That's, that's new money.
That's annual contributions, yes.
Still 1.5, is that percentage?
A better answer.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was the first question?
But it's, that's, that's new money. That's not money that we've had, that's new incoming from revenues.
That is new annual money that's going, is being budgeted to come from others' funds.
I was under the impression that we were going to do the transfers and not do any new money this year.
That's why we're having today's discussion.
Yeah. It's, remember, it's seed money, okay, from Chesapeake, 300,000, some for the transfer tax, okay? Think of that as a separate bucket. Then we looked at all the different ways others share, property tax, parking, all those other pieces, and we thought our direction or conversation to Ellen Rain was use FY '25 actuals to start to do that, because you don't know where you're gonna be on those kinds of things, okay? So, all right, so, and then you have this ongoing Chesapeake, 20,000 a year. So, remember, seed money is, what's in the bank now, 300,000, and then we went, we started 750 at the finance committee and came down to 375 for transfer tax, a one-time seed money, seed money.
And that seed money totals, so if I put here, seed money equals 675,000.
That's the sum of first two.
Right.
Existing.
Existing. Then you say, how do you fund it out of your ongoing? And we said, as an estimate, you will take 20,000 from what we get from the Chesapeake Fund, Utility Fund. We'll get a percentage of property tax, no increase in property tax, a percentage of existing property tax, a percentage of parking, a percentage of GRT, and then new transfer tax. So, there's the seed money, and then there's the ongoing budgeting.
Yeah, I was confused. I thought seed money was seed money, and then next year we were gonna start with funding that would hopefully generate about $500,000 annually, correct?
500 to 600,000, you're right, is roughly what comes in as you go through every year, but-
Right.
But the proposal from the finance committee was, go ahead and put that in, but for her, for Ellen Rain to know how much to put in, because you don't know what actual GRT is gonna be, or parking, use actuals from FY '25 to put into the fund, so that the fund would get over a million in its first year, and then it's somewhere between-
I never understood that. I asked 100 times about this, and I never knew, and I asked, you know, I was concerned that it was way too much, and I was thinking around 500,000, but I didn't realize, I asked, that we were starting to all pay, the city's paying seed money now, and then, and then on a parallel track, we were all start paying in the one first year.
In the first year, we were, so, I don't know where the confusion is, there's seed money, and then there is actual funding from actuals.
I just thought that was next year.
Gotcha.
And that the seed money was, you call it seed money.
Yes.
You're seeding it, and then everyone's gonna learn about it, and then we were gonna have conversations, because we, I thought we talked about, how much do we take from short-term rentals, and-
We didn't, we had a percentage for each, roughly 2 percent from parking.
No, I know, I saw, but I thought we were concerned about, we were gonna have conversations about the short-term rental tax, and how that may help, and accommodations tax for hotels and others, and how that's gonna potentially impact visitors and other things like that. I don't, I'm sorry, I, maybe I'm just, I missed all this, just like I missed on the police stuff, but I don't.
I was also under the impression that we were going to try to have a resolution to adopt the, first of all, go to a public hearing, then try and come back and actually put the resiliency plan into play. So, what we're doing now is, we're funding a million dollars on a program that we have not adopted yet, and I find that problematic. I find it problematic, because, number one, we're taking a million dollars of public funds and putting into a program that we don't know, I think the public will accept it, and I believe, we all believe in it, I do, and I see that vision out there, and I've said this several times, I see the vision, I see where we wanna go, let's not take it out of this year's budget. That's why I asked so clearly last time, and spent a lot of time asking about budget transfers, because I felt that you could run into this year's budget, short that million dollars, take it out of what we're putting forward. Now, it's not a 13 percent increase, it's lower. Go back to a budget amendment, we have the money in there. I didn't think we were taking the tax money out. This year, I thought it was only seed money.
Okay, so, let's step in for a second. So, and so obviously there's some confusion, okay.
Yeah, the other thing I'm confused about, I think one thing you mentioned too, was there was no property increase, property tax increase this year, but this calls, still calls for 2 percent of a 5 percent increase.
No, okay, so, several weeks ago when we started the budget process, Khalil, I think, you know, strongly stated, don't really want a property tax increase when we have the kind of reserves. So, I came forward and said, let's take this out, let's not do a 2 percent, let's not do the 5 percent for resiliency, let's just take the, the property share, commercial, industrial, and residential, let's take it out of our existing tax rate. You know, given we know all the things that are going on with Sussex County, and people are gonna have new tax bills, plus we have a significant rainy day fund, we can fund this out of. So, that was several weeks ago, that, that, and we have, we haven't had a public hearing on resiliency, but we have had a lot of the public speak to us about resiliency, okay, in addition to the effort that Khalil and others led years ago. So, we pulled that out and said, okay, that amount of money out of property tax would be existing, not an, not an add-on, okay? That was the biggest change. The only two changes from the finance committee's recommendation to us is, lower the tax, the transfer tax, we did, that's 375, rather than their recommendation initially of 750, and then we, then we discussed, let's not increase property tax, let's take it out of the existing base. That's, that's where it is, so there's really no change from anything that the finance committee said. Then Ellen Rain came back and said, I'm speaking for you, as if you're not in the room, let's not go to projections, let's use FY '25 actuals, so we can actually see the numbers. So, we look at FY '25 parking, and we say, okay, let's look at FY '25. FY '26 could be more or less, we don't know. Rental tax could be more or less, we don't know. So, that's why she's using FY '25, because that's kind of a sound practice. And then we said, let's use transfer tax collected at a 10 percent going forward, okay? And then the other thing that I know, Tim, you mentioned, was should everything, should we also do that 20,000 every year from just Chesapeake, are we looking for other things? So, so there's, that's been very consistent, just those two changes, that, from what the finance committee had recommended. So, what that does, it gets you a little over a million to start, to kickstart, so you start having an investment, a fund to be able to invest upon, and then you're looking at depending, you know, we don't know the future, 500 to 600,000 annually, looks like what's being generated from the sources we discussed. And why do, I'll tell you why I think we need the kickstart of the million from the finance committee. We wanna have enough in, we've got a resiliency project right now that we'll, we'll have to do a match on in about a year, and that's, or we could do the match on, and that's the cedar, the floodgate gate. Okay, so that's about a, I forget the exact number of that one, but that's gonna significantly use some resiliency fund, because we owe that pledge to, to DEMA. So, that's the reason why the finance committee said, kickstart it at a good size, and then you can plan on, again, half a million to 600,000 from these different sources.
So, one of the things I really liked about the stewardship committee, and then the finance committee with the budget, was, and we've talked about this, is, it seemed like a really interesting and thoughtful balance between short-term infrastructure and long-term infrastructure issues. Short-term being primarily our, you know, roads and other, you know, issues that deal buildings and others here in the city, that many of them need upgrading. And long-term being more the resiliency fund, which was fine. And I don't know, Ellen Rain or Amy, you may have, can say this, I just wanna make sure that our investment in both of those is very balanced, and that we're not, I always envisioned and preferred a $500,000, around $500,000 seed money, with then succeeding years being 500, roughly 5, 600,000. So, our seed money is consistent with what we are trying to do. If we wanna go to a million dollars, which is what I, what I'm hearing now, but the 675, and then the other things, I would like just to understand that we're not going too far on the resiliency side at the expense of short-term, our short-term infrastructure.
Really good point. So, the road is about a million. So, in other words, exactly what you're saying, 100 percent, I agree with you, and the finance committee did too. It's about a million on the roads, and about a million in resiliency. And the reason why they wanted to do the million, which is a little bit different than the earlier studies, is because the resiliency fund is more active. So, in other words, let's say we want to put some money towards Blockhouse Pond, okay? In other words, the earlier studies on resiliency, which was absolutely the industry standard, was, raise your money, invest your money, protect your money. Now, it's, use your money, because events are happening, weather events are happening, use a percentage of it, and, and store, so the, and, and protect in a, in a reserve. So, the finance committee looked at short and long term, and said, it's very balanced. It's about a million on the roads, you can give me the actual number, but it's roughly a million, that's the short term, that's not necessarily resiliency, but that's meeting taxpayer needs about, let's get our road infrastructure done, and about a million in this first year, and then it's half a million to 600,000. So, you're, exactly what you're saying is, your vision is really what they also agreed with.
But my also, my vision also means, what I mean is, short, the million dollars for short term, that's almost basically shovel-ready projects, ready to go. And short-term meaning between now and five years from now. In my, that's my, my vision of, you know, or next year, the next three years, we have projects we need to do, you know, railroad avenue, other things like that, and we can't really touch the resiliency fund until we, I think, the current draft is, the most we can spend is 850.
Correct.
And we can't really even access it until it reaches a certain number, correct?
We took that piece out, that was an original concept.
Right.
We, we put the 850, but we didn't say that council couldn't by supermajority say, I wanna put 50,000 towards X this next, when we do next year's budget, or-
See, I think that's, I'm, I'm concerned about that, because I thought, not only do we wanna spend the money now, but we still wanna have money left over in that, in that fund 30 years from now.
Right.
And the fact, I thought the goal was to build it up to 5 million or so.
I forgot to speak to a minimum amount that has to stay in there, or no?
Yeah. I thought there was, yeah.
Because that's a good point about the pleading of the certain level, or-
We, for ongoing management.
I know we can't spend more than 850.
Correct. For the first five years, access will be limited to 850,000 maximum for this entire five-year period.
So, so it is limited to 850 for five years?
Correct.
For five years.
Not per year, but for the five years.
Right. So, we at council could say, spend 700,000 next year, or say, only spend 100,000. In other words, it's, it's a, it's a, think of it as a checking account that we have access to, but it's for five years, it's 850. So, we did protect, that you wouldn't withdraw, thank you for that.
So, if we put in a million, and we take out 850, how much do we have left?
Well, we wouldn't do that, I mean, that's a supermajority.
We'd have, we couldn't spend any more money for five years.
Yeah, I can do that.
That is why I sort of suggested last week, that if, if there is the intention, and it's budgeted for the, a fourth tranche of, to Fourth Street, is essentially using this as a pass-through for that, and making your first allocation be that 250, and that, in some ways relieves you of another 250 of this year's budget.
You could, you could, we could do that, yep. The 750 is not on the table, because that's FY '20, you know, that's pledged already in FY '25, and we took that out of the excess, the surplus in FY '25. We could, we could say that, we could say, we've already, we could-
The purchase for this year.
That's it, we're done. Yeah, exactly. But that's reasonable, that's, that's a resiliency project, it's open space, it, it addresses flood mitigation, it's a good example of one that we could do.
What I like about this is, two things. One, we've committed to long-term infrastructure projects in, in two categories. One, we've taken money out of the budget to take care of our roads, which people are saying need to be done, and, and we're moving in that direction, and I think that's great. Secondly, we've got a lot of infrastructure that deals with things like the Blockhouse Pond, like the floodgates, all these kinds of things. So, you're assuring that money's gonna be there. You're not going to take it and roll it over and spend it on other things. It's dedicated money, which, which I really like, because in the future, councils will be able to say, hey, look, we've got this money, let's continue to take care of the infrastructure, let's not have a lapse in that. So, I really like that part of it. I think the resiliency plan is, is a good thing. I'm just trying to wrap my head around all these numbers, because they are pretty big numbers, and it's a big commitment we're making.
But remember, it is a big commitment. We also are not top, we are not tapping into our rainy day reserves, I'm gonna call that, you know, resiliency is one thing, but rainy day reserves are for the city to keep the lights on and do its functions, okay, and operate. We're not touching that, because, remember, in Ellen Rain's memo, when we started this whole process, it's, protect your reserves at all cost, use your transfer tax at whatever level, as, as long as you have it, and that's what the finance committee was recommending. Meet the needs, meet the needs of your city through that, have two reserves, a resiliency reserve for the projects we're talking about, and then a rainy day fund, let's just call it an operating reserve, because that gives us the funds to operate should catastrophic, I don't mean environmental, but catastrophic things happen.
Could be, we have that already.
Yes.
That's the one, that's over 8 million dollars.
And we're not, and we're not, none of this taps into, right. Now, in out years, if we don't figure out other ways on revenue, you start to have to look at that, to be able to fund the, the things that we wanna fund, like the roads, continuing work on that. But not in this, not in this one. And I don't mean it's a cliff for FY '27, but we, that projection shows us that Ellen Rain will have to continue to look at efficiencies in City Hall, she will have to still look, you know, all those things that she normally does, she'll have to do, but right now, the way we have this, our operating reserves at, you know, eight-plus million are, are protected, and there's an investment strategy that we're going in front of the finance committee, and then in front of us, which should bring back somewhere about 150,000 to 180,000 going forward, because our investment, whether it's T-bills or equities, is gonna actually generate some fun. We've had some funds sitting fairly idle and dormant, that's a better way to put it, Tim, and so we're, that's another source.
So, what I would like council to provide direction to me is, when it comes to the resiliency, one, what's the seed money, and is council good with the seed funding, and then the annual funding? I see those as two separate.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So, it's the allocation of, excuse me, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I, I think you're right on, and that, I think, is where the questions have started. We were under, some of us were under the impression that we were just going to seed it this year, take a break, next year, put an equal amount in to continue rolling. That's kind of the impression I got.
That was my impression too, I obviously was wrong.
Well, it's not been finalized, that's why we're here.
There's no, the, the seed money for, that's been allocated for this year, no, I'm sorry, the seed money, I'm confusing the two things, we'll call that the revenue money, the 400 or whatever. That's not new, it's revenue, it's really just percentages of existing revenue, correct?
Correct.
If we didn't put it there, I guess, what, what would we, what would we do with it? There's no allocation for it now currently, right? You're not using it to fund other?
No, because it's, it's pulling from general fund, 416,000, $800, and it's pulling 300,000 from the transfer tax.
So, in effect, I think, may I put it in my words, and you correct me?
Right.
It seems to me what we're doing, in effect, is taking our budget projections, and we are, in effect, earmarking what some portion of those revenues will be.
Like forced saving, it's like-
For, and to fund the resiliency fund, we're building that bucket, so to speak.
Yes, and we're not, I'm sorry.
And what I'm proposing is, we can save further by, if you still would put the 400 in there, and you decide that you do wanna fund the last 250 of the Fourth Street, it's in there, and you haven't had to find the 250 somewhere else.
Correct.
Just sitting in-
I was confused.
That's right.
So, it'd be, yeah, in the first year, you would be making an allocation.
That's right.
So, the message, because, and then Jim's ask becomes, yeah, we, we have budgeted for the additional 250 in the resiliency fund, it's there.
Yes.
And it'll just take a supermajority of council to unlock it.
And that's what's confused me about this whole process, and that is, that I don't even see this as new money, this seed. I'm looking at it, and I've said this in past meetings, all we're doing is, we're taking a piece of money, making a new budget category. I don't even know why we need to vote on it.
I mean, I'm comfortable with this, as long as it doesn't involve a 5 percent taxing increase. I'm fine with this concept, because it does start the process, and it still frees up the money to use this year for certain resiliency projects, whether that be, again, Fourth Street, or whether you're spending some of Blockhouse, or have you.
So, are you saying that you're, you're, you're on, you're on target with the seed portions, and you're also on the target with the new 500?
Yeah, because it doesn't involve, it doesn't involve, you know-
Right, I'm, I'm there.
New revenue.
Right.
Slightly, though, I guess the short-term rental, we're agreeing to go up half a percent.
But if we didn't do it this year, we'd have 400,000 left over, and I would, I would like to see more than 150,000, for example, with our beach shack over on Savannah Road, and, and, and looking at that, and redeveloping that, and the needs that are, that are over there.
But that's a different thing.
Is that budgeted for this year?
It is different, but I mean, if we're not gonna-
It is.
But I think what she's saying, that's our, this budget for also.
I know, but I don't, I don't think 150,000 is near enough to do anything over there, is my point. And that is something that is more short-term, it's unique, it's different, are, not only, has anybody been there recently? There's, there's like no room over there.
Can we hold on to that idea and talk about that, and get this thing out of the way, because-
Well, the guess that Khalil's saying is, the two are sort of interlinked, is-
Yeah. I'm not saying 400,000 needs to come out of the resiliency, but I'm saying 150, in my mind, again, going to the balance of short-term infrastructure versus long-term, that, to me, is a short-term infrastructure opportunity. We have 150,000 budgeted there, which I, in my conversations with Ellen Rain, Janet, and others, doesn't get us very far.
So, how about this idea? Is it okay? Okay, so, why don't we, so, just remember, we're not, this is no increased revenue. Why don't we take 100,000 of the transfer tax that was gonna fund the seed money for the resiliency, and put that towards the, towards the beach?
That's not enough, for me.
So, then it's 250,000.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's gotta be more, because to me, that is a, a unique opportunity.
Well, we have an opportunity, though, Khalil. If, if you look at this, let's say we stay on track with getting this resiliency, the seed money in, whatever, 675, all right? We get that off the table. Now, we had a million dollars in additional transfer come in this year, we're anticipating an additional million dollars that we didn't even know was coming in. Can we earmark some of that for what you're talking about?
Well, remember, we have funded the Fourth Street clutch.
Took 750 out of that pot. We took 750 out of that surplus transfer tax last time we met, okay? Khalil, what, what kind of dollar amount, and also, Ellen Rain, are you looking at for the beach property?
May I speak to that for a second?
Okay.
Please, thank you. During our, one of our recent, oh, I'm sorry, during one of our recent meetings, we, when this issue came up as a targeted project, we expanded the, what I would call the study of what could be done over there at the, what you're, we're calling the beach shack. And as far as I know, we don't have the results of that study, and I don't know of anything about, you know, I don't know anything about what project costs are going to be if we do successfully commit to expanding that beach shack.
Or just updating it, not even expanding it.
But that's not what we decided, our instructions were, as I recall, what we are instruct- our instructions were that we would expand the scope of the project.
To be an all, all-season facility.
Correct, we talked about impossible meeting rooms, I remember that was an idea. You know, I, I don't know, I, I don't have the notes in front of me of what we, what we discussed that day, but that was one of them. And so, as far as I know, we were supposed to, I thought the instructions to staff would be, would be, the outcome of that conversation would be that, a conversation would be had with an architect, and engineering firm, whatever.
Right, right.
To figure out what the possibilities are to, to improve that structure. And as far as I know, that study hasn't been done. Is that correct?
Not in the last week, it has not.
Right. That's what I thought. I don't know if you're withholding information. So I don't know why we would fund, commit funds to it if we don't have what the?
Really surprises me here, is I've heard you and you talk a number of times about all the road projects we have, and all the other things we have here. And I'm using that as an example, and I'd like to, so where the hell are we, we're talking about trying to find a balance here.
Right.
You know, where are your suggestions about other things? Because I do think we need to have a proper balance. I, not only do I support the resiliency fund, I think it's going to be a home run for our community on a number of levels. But I don't, I don't, I don't understand the equality in the first year, a million and a million, when we have projects that I've been hearing about on Fourth Street and other places, we've got potholes that people are complaining about.
Khalil's balancing what he can, he's views rightfully so, the resiliency is more long-term issues, and what's in front of us now.
To me.
Yeah, what could be funded immediately.
That's an example I'm bringing up.
I understand, but, but we don't have a plan to spend, I, I, what I'm suggesting is.
You don't have a plan to spend after, we've been hearing about all, we don't spend enough on infrastructure?
No, 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 I'm speaking specifically, I'm reacting to your suggestion that we put more money towards the beach shack.
Because that's the one thing that I've identified, but apparently you guys have identified other issues that need help here.
No, I have not, no, I'm not, I'm not, I am not suggesting that those dollars.
The long-term plan is the one that GMB did for us, and all the monies that are there.
Let's, let's take a pause for just a second.
So you're right, Khalil, but what I look at is, when I look, and this is where I think this falls short, that stuff is on here, it just doesn't have money affixed to it.
Well, that's a question I guess I had for Ellen Lorraine, which is, if that, we'll call it four hundred thousand dollars.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
If we have a compromise, say, two hundred goes into resiliency fund, is there two hundred that could go into capital projects under these funding sources that would qualify under the funding sources?
This is all based with these.
Yes, we could reallocate that four sixteen number, four hundred thousand, we can reallocate that.
But remember, we have a, absolutely, remember, we have, in the budget that's in front of us, a million dollars for the road capital improvement projects, and we have?
A million dollars?
A million dollars in resiliency, and in our budget, we have a hundred and fifty thousand to put towards the planning and design of the, we should have a much better term than beach shack, let's say the beach facility. So, in other words, we do have, I think, what we're talking about. Now, I'm, I don't know enough about building, except when I'm ready to get in my house, and it's so much more than I anticipate. So, that study may come back and say, to turn that property into an all-year, all-season event is going to cost us four hundred thousand dollars, but we don't know that.
Okay, let's throw, let's throw the, the Beach Patrol headquarters, whatever you want to call it, Beach Shack, whatever, out of the way here. We have, these are the projects. All I am saying is, I don't think it's responsible that we have a number of short-term infrastructure projects that are, that are sitting right here, and that's been a matter of discussion multiple times, and we're dedicating the exact same amount of money to a long-term project versus the short-term projects. I'm not saying that, that resiliency is, I'm just saying for the first year, resiliency should not be at the same level as our short-term projects. That, that need to be funded now, because we're, we're going to spend eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars presumably in the next five years on resiliency. And that's, you know, or whatever we decide, maybe it's a million, or something along those lines. But I, I have a problem just with the equivalency between a million for short-term and a million for resiliency in this budget. I would like to see either more for short-term, or less for resiliency.
So, I would agree with you if we weren't tapping into resiliency. In other words, if resiliency was actually a piggy bank not to touch, then I would say, I'd be right with you, and I'd say, wait a minute, we got some short-term things we got to address. But because we're looking at resiliency as being more dynamic, it's going to, money's going to move in and out, then you have a million, you know, these are just round numbers, but a million for the capital projects, a million for resiliency, and maybe a proposal on the table, as Andrew has said, two hundred and fifty thousand for a resiliency project for the balance of the Fourth Street commitment, that says, okay, you've actually started to use that. Now, if you kept all your resiliency and didn't really touch it, then we could say, wait a minute, are we a little bit out of alignment for long-term versus short-term? But I think we're, we're in total alignment. We're saying, we're going to be roughly doing a half a million a year for resiliency, half a million to six hundred, and our road project, if you look at the total every year, we're looking at eight hundred to a million dollars to do capital projects every year.
Right.
And we're not putting that, we're not deferring maintenance any longer, we're not, we're not adding to the operating reserves, we're spending our money in taxpayer dollars to help taxpayers.
And I, I think to go along with what Khalil says, when you look at this, I see, I see different pots, and I see long-term, I see the resiliency, that's a separate pot. It's identified, it's earmarked, we can't spend it on certain things. I see the infrastructure, the million dollars for infrastructure. I see that as roads, sidewalks, think, like hard infrastructure.
Yes.
And then I see the stuff you're talking about, which is sort of infrastructure, but it's buildings that we need to keep up. So I see that as another pot. And my question is, and you said, well, we're putting too much money in the other pots. I think we need to create that pot. We've got a hundred and fifty in it, how do we get more in it?
That's what I'm.
So how do we take, how do we create a pot and put more money in that pot, not taking it from the other two?
Okay, so if two.
Because they're established.
Okay, so we have places we can do that.
Yeah.
We can allocate more of our transfer tax dedicated to those other things, we can, and we're not going to, increase taxes, we know that's kind of off the table, I pretty much believe, for now at least, not for the future, but for now, we can.
I'll be gone for a while.
Okay, and we could, we could dip into our operating reserves. We have places to go. We do, so that's why the finance committee says, don't touch them for a year, because you have other ways to fund. Hold on to those, but don't keep increasing your operating reserves, because actually your operating reserves are getting to be out of balance with our commitments. That's, that's really, I will tell you, financially, as I look at this, that actually was my first insight, wait a minute, we're out of balance with what we're protecting ourselves. I mean, it's, it feels odd to say we have too much on our rainy day fund on balance, we do. And that's what the finance committee came to as well, and they said, keep it, but use all of your other money on all those other kinds of things.
Right.
Okay? And they also said, the last lever you pull is increase to property tax, okay? And we've been able, and Ellen Lorraine's been able to really present us to something that we don't have to do, that five percent increase in property tax.
So let's say that we want to fill this pot.
Which pot? Which pot, though? Be very clear about which pot.
The beach shack pot, I don't know.
Well, he's not, he's just doing that as an example.
Yeah, I get it. So, so let's say, we, we talked about the idea of being able to do budget amendments. We have a big pot of money that we talked about, set aside, why don't we, at this point, make a commitment, or come to consensus, that we're going to start with a hundred and fifty to do the study? Because if, if anything gets done to that, it's going to take more than a year, probably. And, and then we can transfer money over, we can do a, a budget transfer.
I don't, I don't even, quite honestly, think we're going to have to transfer money, because remember, we're using FY twenty five actuals to fund the resiliency, that is a little bit conservative, appropriate, but a little bit conservative, okay? So, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, there will be a surplus of funds, so that we can look at mid-year, and at, and at end of year, the fund balance, to allocate money to other places, not the pot of resiliency.
So what I hear you saying too is, is that we can come back, as a council, sometime mid-year, review where we are in this budget, and make some modifications.
Not only can we, we should, we have to, that's our charter responsibility.
And we'll rely upon the finance committee to give us more recommendations for us to consider in helping us in that process.
Right.
Do we have an actual, I remember we, I think that's a really good idea, we discussed it. Did we discuss doing that maybe in November?
Yes.
Should we set like a date?
I think we should set as a, yes, we should have a protocol that's called fund balance discussion, that's what most municipalities do. I mean, Ellen Lorraine did it, actually, when she said, hey, we've got some extra money, do you want to fund?
It's an update, it's an update where we are.
And it's, and really, the fall is your best time, because you've already received property tax money, you've already seen the biggest part of parking gross rent, gross rental. It's a very good time in that October, November, because, you know, we still have months left to actually go back in and say, this is what we're looking at. If you do it in the first quarter, it's premature in terms of money.
We think like six months?
Six months roughly, and so.
That'd be six months from April one.
So can we set that date now? Can we just real quick get a date and put it on the, on the calendar?
Getting back to the three.
And, just to finish that, excuse me. Yes, it should be in October, it should be a designated October, we should do a special meeting, not just, we should do it just like this, and call it fund balance discussion, okay? And we do it in October at six months. Sometimes you do.
November would be eight months.
No.
But we're doing it from fiscal year, April one, we start, right?
Yeah.
Right, so October would be six months, and then November would be seven.
Yeah.
Well, we have all of April.
May, June, July, August, September, October. And the, and the only reason you would do it in November rather than October, is you've got to give your city manager time to post the cost of October.
Yep.
Okay, so to me, November is better, because she's going to have to be estimating a month, and you don't really want to do that in a fund balance, you want to really be at three quarters. So, November, so November, pre, pre-holidays, we should be doing this. Yeah. I'm sorry, I was just finishing that for date.
Circle back to what was said minutes ago, early in this discussion, when you identified the three funding sources for the resiliency fund, and that was the property tax, the GRRT, and parking tax, and it was a percentage of each?
Yes.
One of those. And the, the percentage there would be based on the actuals of, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so for FY twenty six?
Right.
We would use actuals of FY twenty five.
Correct.
Okay, so there's no surprise there. You would, she would actually look at what we have. And then, what would also happen in that fund balance conversation, is the city manager would say, here's the, let's just use parking meters as an example. Let's say parking, or let's say the gross rental was significantly more or less, then she may come back to us and say, next year's resiliency, I recommend you do one point five, or two point five, because something's changed.
Right.
Okay?
Yes, exactly.
So remember, we're not, we're not locked in, and that's why when I wrote the resiliency policy statement, I didn't put any percentages in.
Right.
I'd put the sources. So if for some reason, no one comes to the beach, and we have no parking, well, you know, that extreme case, we would be able to say, for the next year's amount in the resiliency, we're going to be at point six percent parking. That's why the policy document does not have actual numbers in it, it just has sources of funds that are going to fund resiliency. But we at council will determine that based on actuals.
On actuals, right.
So that's, that's a safeguard, additional safeguard.
So can I, can I ask for a recap on a couple things? One, let's go back to the resiliency fund. Do, do we have consensus that we're, we're going to take six hundred and seventy-five thousand and put it in the seed?
I think everyone's agreeable to that.
Are we all agreeable to that? Okay, how about?
And that's three, I'm sorry.
Three hundred from Chesapeake, and three seventy five.
From transfer tax.
So we're all, we're all on board with that, right?
Is that?
Okay.
I don't know.
All right.
I'm not a hundred percent on board with that. I really wanted this, but I'm not going to put a roadblock here and filibuster because of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more. But I really, in looking, because as, as Amy referenced earlier, I did serve on the resiliency committee, and we looked at a number of communities, and a million dollars to start a, a resiliency fund, I never even saw that anywhere. And I saw it most, I saw it most recently in Connecticut, a town in Connecticut did one point one million in their seed money, but it was because of some new windfall that came out of nowhere on property that they had, and they didn't realize they had, and there's like, oh, what are we going to do with that?
What I'm translating is that Khalil and I are kind of in a similar point, which is, he's, I think what you're advocating for are resiliency projects for this year, like, if we're going to use that four hundred thousand, they should be on projects that we might designate as resilient projects.
They're two.
But this year.
Okay, so.
Not, not, yeah.
And we haven't had that discussion, you've had the one suggestion, but we really haven't formed that idea.
Correct, but there are two that are just sitting right out there. One is Fourth Street, okay, the two hundred and fifty thousand. The second one is the FEMA funding to the city and GMB for Cedar Street, our match, okay?
Twenty-five percent, we think?
Twenty-five percent, and that's a big project. So, so, we can take that, so if we had, if we didn't have resiliency, we would have to take that match out of operating funds in FY twenty six, twenty seven, depending when they finish the effort. Typically, you don't put your match on a FEMA grant until you're near the end.
Right.
Okay.
So if we took that four hundred and put it here under Charlie's thing, under coastal resiliency project funds current fiscal year, would that be more in line, which, that's a, that's a commitment to.
Right, but then you're not putting it in the resiliency fund?
No, no, it is in the resiliency fund, it's just the resiliency fund is paying for that part.
Right. My point was, I didn't think, I didn't think we needed a million dollars in seed money.
Right.
Well, it is seed, well, in my mind, we were putting in seed money, and then we were paying from the other sources as seed money.
Right.
We didn't have, and a million dollars in seed money, half coming, roughly, half coming from our money, and half coming from citizens.
Right.
If, if, if that, a good part of that money can be spent on resiliency now.
Those two projects.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, good, okay.
Yeah, fine. I didn't want a million dollars in seed money.
I hear you. So we actually, we would have, we could, we could say, we are going to allocate two projects, right now, it's our match related to the cedar, that's, that is a complete resiliency project, the floodgate, and we're going to put in the last part of the Fourth Street.
Which is resiliency.
Which is resiliency. So that amount, to me, requires you to put in the million, because we actually have a place for it that is immediate.
So does that, does that make you feel any different about the six seventy-five seed, plus the additional we were going to roll in? Because that brings it up to a million one, right?
Correct, roughly.
So, but that includes those projects.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's a good compromise of saying, okay, these are resilient projects that we're going to do this year.
And if we did them two years from now, it's a lot more money. I'd rather do them now.
I agree. It also says that we're acting upon resiliency, I mean, I like that, I like that right away, that it says, this isn't just something where, it's not theory, we actually have two things that are going to, and one is, you know, on the beach side, and one is on the town side, and they're different kinds of projects. So, it shows kind of a nature, because resiliency is about hardscaping, and let's call it softscaping, even though that's not the word. So, in other words, the Fourth Street is a nature-based resiliency project, and the floodgates is a hardscaping one. It's a good, it's a good combination to come out with.
That triggered something to me a little while ago, when we were talking about resiliency, the word. It's been thrown around a lot, most recently in the last two or three years, people have an understanding what it means, but it can be expanded, it can be narrowed. Just out of curiosity, it was mentioned in, with regards to Blockhouse Pond, a little while ago.
Right.
And I can understand spending money on resiliency there, because it's protecting a city asset.
Stormwater asset.
The stormwater, but then I also think about, and this is where we're going to have challenges now and in the future, resiliency, to most of us, at least to me, does involve a bit of that, but mostly it's about protecting private property, and, and not just our city assets. Private property as well, as well as city assets like Blockhouse Pond, this building, and other things. So I just wonder, as we, we move forward with resiliency, we start making a little more, have some more thoughtful conversations about priority, like understanding what's more. more, have some more thoughtful conversations about priority, like understanding what's more important.
Right.
I mean, both are important. You're talking about protecting city assets so that we can bounce back quicker, but nothing against Blockhouse Pond, but that's not a functioning building that people work at.
Right.
And so where does that fall into?
Really, really critical point. I think that one of the things we should do is task GMB with that kind of direction to say, tee up for us.
Prioritize.
Five to 10 projects that we can look at, and we want to look at ones that protect businesses, protect residents. You know, one of the, one of the examples in a.
City properties.
City properties.
Yeah.
Right. So I think that should, is, to me, based on our conversations, that is a task to GMB. Come and give us those. One of the ones that Danielle Swallow talked about when you and I went to South Bethany, which is not a huge expense, but it's resiliency for businesses, provide them support to how to do a coop, a continuing of operations, continuity of operations. Our individual small businesses do not have the time or money to be able to do that, but we could bring in seed grant to do that. And what that does is it says to an individual business owner.
Right.
Should your property be flooded or your customers not be able to get to you, here's, get a plan in place that you can pull out of the drawer immediately of how you continue to operate. And a lot of people are now looking at that as business resiliency, but it's really, it's because of a weather event. So I would say that we have that, I would be directing, recommending that we direct GMB to give us a range of those things and then we can start. We have two that are great right in front of us, Forest Street and the floodgates on Cedar, but let's go a little bit further for the next year allocation.
I would think that Chamber could get involved in.
Sure.
Right.
Sure, absolutely.
I just think that the concept of resiliency is we just need to have continued conversations and understand better, you know, what are we talking about? Because, you know, I think we know generally we're talking about, but I could see us having a battle with the community amongst ourselves about not picking on Blockhouse Pond, but Blockhouse Pond versus another project.
Right.
And it's like, okay, what's more important?
Yeah.
You know, we don't, we all have a certain amount, and so I think we just need to make sure, because I, you know, that is a city asset.
That's right.
We need to help preserve that.
And yes, I had mentioned some kind of a council to get feedback from the community, a, a resiliency council to help us.
Yeah. You know, it's interesting because Ellen Marine and I have been talking and we've been talking to the environmental, we've been, we've been speaking to the environmental subcommittee that they've done most of their initial work, so just a thought to put in your heads that maybe we say to the planning commission, thank you, you've done the big ordinance changes and the ones that are coming to us this year, but next year maybe we set up an environmental resiliency committee that reports to council. So it's not through the planning commission because that's just one piece of it, it reports to us and that has citizen involvement, right?
Exactly. And we don't have the time with all the stuff we do to be that deeply involved.
That's right.
They would do the work for us, bring it to us with all the foundations.
Exactly. Exactly. And that wouldn't report to any one committee, it's a direct committee to us.
While, while I have the floor a minute, getting back to this, while we've made a decision, so we don't forget.
Can you remind me what that decision is? Sorry.
Well, I thought we had made a decision, we were going to go with 101.
101?
The million one.
Okay, so that's the seed funding?
Hold on a second, Joe.
Right.
It's the seed money.
It's the seed money and the additional monies going in.
Okay.
And we, we found a couple of projects that we want to do. Can we write them on here so we don't forget?
Yeah, I'm suggesting a cell that says Coastal Resiliency Projects and just stick it under FY '26, I guess.
And even.
And what is that particular, do we, are we identifying a particular project or is it just that general description that Charlie provided?
I think we should.
What are we committing those dollars to?
I think since they're on the budget.
The Cedar floodgate project.
It's the Cedar Street floodgate.
That's all I'm asking for.
Project, the city match to federal grant.
And those two are on the budget already, the Forest Street and the seed money, or I'm sorry, the match for the floodgates?
The match for the floodgates is not because it's a couple of years out.
It's a couple of years out.
The Forest Street Preserve is in FY '26.
Right. So the fact that those floodgates is several years out.
That's okay, then let's put that in, why, let's put whatever, 250 for Forest Street then on this year's and then put the other.
Yeah. I mean, you can, you can send FEMA your match.
No, but there's no need.
No, exactly.
We don't even know FEMA is going to be around, you know?
But, but that grant doc, whoever owns that grant.
Yeah.
We have to pay them our match.
Yeah, but that could be several years out.
Probably no more than two.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so that would be paid, I'm going to say paid in '28, we think, possibly, FY '28?
It's '27, '28, it's, it's going to be.
I would say '28.
'28, it would be safe.
Yep.
But we're making the commitment to it.
I understand.
Right, right.
So just a question, now.
Because we're coming to consensus.
Would it be appropriate for us to vote on this part of it?
Not today.
No, not today.
We don't have action.
We don't have action till Monday, no.
Okay, all right.
But I, yeah, but I like the way you're thinking in terms of how we might go about.
Well, that gets us out of the way.
One of the things I was going to ask about how we go about approving, because I know that the financial stewardship committee and then through the finance committee made recommendations, so one thing that might be helpful is essentially see of those recommendations, which are we essentially accepting and which in part are we amending and rejecting? Because that really tells the story of the budget.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be helpful for me to understand on Monday, what are we.
Okay.
Right.
Voting, you know, because I think one of the recommendations was a property taxing piece.
Yeah, so I would say.
We're not going for that.
We're not going with that.
They did recommend seeding the resiliency up to a million one, we are going, so that, you know, was, was a hybrid.
Correct.
So that's kind of what would be useful to me is, here's recommendations they made, you know.
Yep.
So we can look at the draft budget that was presented on February the 1st.
Okay.
With a letter, and then we'll look at the version that will be presented Monday night.
Okay. So we say the changes, okay.
I need to go get that, are we going to do that right now?
Monday night.
Okay.
But nothing's changed, like, so what we would be voting for on Monday night is a budget of 15 million and 25,000 dollars basically, right?
Right.
Which is, which would represent a 10% increase essentially.
Yeah.
What was last year's increase from the previous year, do you recall off the top of your head?
Not off the top of my head, no.
But I think it was single digits.
Probably.
I'm pretty sure it was single digits, but I, yeah, so 10's in line.
But on Monday night's agenda, you're going to see multiple items related to the '26 budget. Couple of them we're going to have to set public hearings for because of changes to the rate, the short-term GRRT rate is one that we set a public hearing for, the lodging tax, and then we were looking at setting a public hearing for the resiliency fund.
Right.
So.
So, just as a gross level to answer that, we are in concert with the finance committee's recommendation, except for increased property tax.
That's about the only one.
And that was the one they struggled with a lot too, okay, of course.
Probably some relief to them that we weren't looking to do anything.
Well, they went way down. They went from 20 to 5. I mean, they, they brought those numbers way down. Now, remember that also includes the allocations on the, on the other community, like the fire department, you know, the 95,000 or whatever that was at this point. So where the, the big difference is really property tax. I'm, I'm thinking through my mind, all their other recommendations, pretty much were there.
That was.
Pretty much were there, yeah, it's balanced with that. But it's good to go through that for Monday.
Yeah, I mean.
It's a good idea.
The property tax issue is a, is a real issue.
Sensitive.
First of all, I mean, I encourage everybody to go to the Sussex County website and put in your assessment in your school district and you'll be stunned how much your property taxes is going up, regardless of whether it is the value, fair market value of your home, it's, mine was at least, was about three times.
Yeah. Mine was, mine was a thousand times.
But, but I think the, the regs are that they can't raise it more than 10%.
15.
They can't generate more than 10% in tax revenue.
In total.
In total, throughout the county.
But let's be honest.
Yeah, and that was never.
Our, our community is going to get hit.
Real big.
Very hard.
Yeah.
The western side of the county, the central side and others probably will see the same and the western side, the more you go, is going to actually see a reduction.
Hmm, okay.
Because.
Wow.
Yeah.
Reduction.
One third will go up, one third will stay the same, one third will get a reduction.
Wow.
And what complicates this even further is that we have a local assessment.
And we will.
And we're, we've been talking about, well, are we going to adopt the Sussex numbers? And that is going to be a long drawn-out process because there's a lot that we need to understand.
So on that, should that be, should that be a conversation on Monday? Because if we, if we choose to, to continue and do our own, we have not budgeted in, even in the out years, the finance, the finance committee recommended, just go with Sussex.
Right, and that's.
Right.
I will tell you my view, that's my view.
That's a business sense.
Okay, it makes business sense.
I don't understand.
Why we would do it.
Yeah, why, who would we go to? We'd go to Tyler Technologies.
Exactly.
And they've already done it.
Same results. Yeah, it's going to be the same results.
It's going to be the same data, they're going to be paid by us to look at their data again.
Right.
So that's a hundred, that's several hundred thousand dollars in next year's budget that the finance committee, it's not in there because we were recommending, don't do that.
I don't foresee us even being able to get that accomplished in FY '26.
Right.
And we don't know whether, if we do adopt that, whether it's going to be neutral or whether it's going to, like I said, we've all got different percentages of, of increase based on the Sussex County. And when we get it in here and we look at their valuation, some of our properties are, they're going to be probably different than.
Well, if we were to adopt the county's valuations, we would just adopt them, we would not go through any.
Well, but if we adopted them, what I'm saying is, is that there's been changes in the properties as they were assessed. Some went up in value, some went down in value, most of ours went up, but some went up at a higher increase than, a percentage than others. For example, I said mine was multiplied by 10 what I currently pay. Khalil said his was multiplied by 3. I've talked to other people that, they were multiplied by 5. Well, that will have the same ramifications if we adopt that here and then put our percentage per value that we're going to be taking.
Well, we have to reduce our rate so that we're revenue neutral in our first year.
But it won't be revenue neutral for everybody.
It's going to be similar to the counties.
As a pie.
Where some may pay more, but in total, our tax revenue has to be the same.
Correct.
That we receive than the prior year.
Yeah.
Right.
And that.
And then the subsequent year, there can be a bump, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Right.
Upon council approval of the budget.
Right.
Okay. I think the other thing we were, had, had on here for a discussion is, is the draft itself. So I think, Terrence, I think we're good on how we allocate or use the funds. Was there any further discussion that people wanted to have on the document itself before we, before Monday's meeting, since we have this opportunity?
Not for me. I, my key issue we just discussed, and I wanted to make sure that we got clarity and we got clarity and consensus.
And I added the undergrounding utilities as an example.
Appreciate you doing that.
And ultimately, what we're saying too, is this will be sent to a public hearing for the, for the public to give comment and then adopt later.
For the resiliency.
Resiliency funding policy.
This instrument?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because we would be passing a resolution that Alex has drafted for us, yes.
And then eventually a charter change.
Right, and I was just going to speak to that because, just to remind us about that supermajority language, that would require that we do a charter change, correct?
That's right. To give meaning to that language, you would do a charter amendment.
Right.
Because a resolution or an ordinance could be repealed through a simple majority.
Right.
Right.
Does that have to go to the state?
Yep.
But, but remember, that's to protect it. Our resolution is the supermajority, but to protect it for future councils, that's why we're doing the charter change. Not, we have the right to do supermajority things, but a future council also has the right to pass a resolution to undo it. So that's why we're going to go the next step to the charter, okay?
Good point.
It's not, it's not to limit us now.
Right.
And it would be an opportunity for us to possibly identify other changes we would need to make to our charter.
I was going to suggest that because that's what you want.
You submit an 01 package.
Right.
That's a, that's a really good point.
And as long as we aren't talking about allowing corporations to vote, we should be okay hitting them through.
Well, is it LLC or corporations?
Strike that out of your list of things.
So.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, then let's go, I think we've had some discussion regarding revenues and proposed revenue changes. Were there any, anything more that folks wanted to say on that? The other one is, again, I don't know what to do, but the, I'm not entirely comfortable with the changes on the, again, they're minor, but the things like the bonfires and the weddings, but to Khalil's point that he made earlier, not enough to, you know, I think.
Yeah.
Stand in front of it. I do think that there are, and I'll say this in a public setting, I think Quest.
This is a public setting.
I am, I'm saying this right now.
Yeah.
I think Quest goes above and beyond as a vendor, and we talked about, you know, whether we really have the bandwidth to go and pick up fires, and I think Matt's proven that he does those kind of things, so, and he is located in the city, so, I think that he should get a residential rate on any of the fires that Quest does, because they are in city business.
Anybody that applies with him that is a resident would get the same rate passed on.
So, any commercial, like.
If it's, if it's.
If he's located, if they have a presence in the city, they would qualify for.
It's the applicant that applies. He's not the applicant. It is the one who's actually getting the bonfire would be the applicant. And if that applicant is a city resident, they would pay the real rate.
I, I agree with that, because.
It still cuts into the margin.
That's not what I think Andrew is suggesting, is it?
I just think, like, yeah, this is a significant increase in the, in the actual cost of doing business. And so, of course, he's gonna pass that on to the customer, but the customer isn't always willing to accept the entirety of the cost, so, you know. I just think it's gonna cause, I think it's gonna cause bad behavior by doubling the rate where you're just gonna get more people not getting permits, and frankly, I might be one of them.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna have Matt Carter coming down, potentially picking up my bonfire, which I left behind, because I'm a derelict anyway, because I didn't get a permit.
Can, can we give a preference to a business over another business?
We have, we have, we have already named him as the preferred vendor. We did this a couple of years ago. Because someone came out of the woodwork saying that, oh, we weren't, so we had, we went through the mechanization.
We went to RFP.
Just put RFP, he's the only one that sent one, so he's demonstrated that he's our vendor of choice. We give him a license down there to perform at Roosevelt Inlet.
Yeah, I'm just, I like the, I like the intent, I'm just worried legally that when a government, I mean, you have.
He has a physical location.
No, I get that.
We do need to check the legal side of this to make sure that we're not, we're not doing anything, but I will say this. I agree with the mayor 100% in the sense that the fees, and I regret that I didn't scrub them as much as I should have for this meeting. And maybe on Monday, if we take a look and there's some things we can offer friendly amendments to change, we can do that, I believe, right, Alex?
That's right.
Yeah, so, because the thing is, I'm just worried, I continue to worry about us raising fees to the point where they become collectively so much, because they typically get passed on, that we are gonna start alienating people.
Or they just ignore them, like I said, like if I'm gonna, one year I paid 25, now you're asking me for 50 or whatever, I'm just like, yeah, I'll just go to my wood and wait for someone to come tell me not to.
I have a, kind of a different way of getting at the same things that you are, and that is that, since the inception of this discussion about raising these fees, I think these are nuisance fees. I don't think it brings in enough money to even make it worth worrying about, and given the kind of budget we have. And I think that we need to make sure that our residents, and maybe even visitors, can come here and enjoy what they came here for. And I, I was not in favor of increasing these rates at all. I wanted them to stay where they were.
When you say these rates, remember these rates are also for people that come in with their boats, okay? I mean, you can't put all of this in one bucket, because they're not apples to apples, okay? Now, I like the idea of giving preferential, let's just call them, let's call them permit fees in general, if it's a local business that is housed in our, in our city limits. I like that. But I, but I do think we have to legally describe, find out how we can do that, what, okay?
How much were we bringing in, in additional revenue by increasing these rates?
Are you talking bonfires, or are you talking Marina slips?
I'm talking, I was talking more about the bonfires. That's the one that really kind of got to me. I thought the slip fees are justified because of the cost.
Let's keep bonfires even.
Yeah, leave the weddings and everything else the same.
Let's, let's.
I mean, what increases.
Exactly. There's too much agita here, I mean, in terms of appropriate. Bonfires are something we value. Other communities don't have it. It's a unique thing about Lewis. We're not gonna fail on our budget to just keep bonfires the same. But the other ones.
Yeah, we'll leave, no problem with that.
Let's leave those others, and so, the people who have permits in our wedding, we already know from all of the data, they don't, they're from out of town, quite honestly. But the bonfires is causing too much rub, and I'm respectful of that. Let's just, let's just go back and keep it the same for one more year. But it doesn't mean the finance committee's not gonna come back, okay, and say.
It's a nuisance.
Yeah.
To me, that's a luxury here for, for citizens that can't afford a boat in a slip. That, you know, it's kind of one of those niceties of being associated with Lewis.
Okay, no, this is a good discussion, I think we're there.
I think we're there. And then we don't have to look at it, we don't have to look at it as a preferred.
This one will, this one will, that way we won't have to worry about Alex doing any legal research either.
Exactly. And we're not putting ourselves at risk of illegal, like, why are you doing that?
Tim, you're gonna have a question.
You think so? I'm gonna make a comment, I think, this time. I'm gonna frame it as a, as a comment or statement. And I, I'm being a stickler on the word choice here, and I'm building on what I said the last time we, we met. I really think that we need to think of fees and taxes and be really clear in our minds what we are levying here. Are we levying a tax, or are we levying a fee? Now, we might, we don't have necessarily the ability to tax because of our charter and so forth. But if we are levying a fee, there should be a service associated with that fee. And I, I just think that we need to give that some consideration, and not just think about these attributes that we have in our city as a revenue source.
No, I get that, but I think in the case of like a bonfire, there is something involved. It's a fee. They're coming in, they're giving awareness to the city that we intend to have a fire on the beach. And, you know, I agree with your point, like, we're not, do we send people down there? There's spot checks, maybe, you know, there's that, there's that potential that someone will come down and see, do you have 25 people, or do you have 100 people? So, there's that option. But nonetheless, there is the process of, oh, thank you for your, eh, receiving the money, and depositing that. So, there's, there's some human effort that goes into it, for sure.
Let me ask you another question while we're on this.
And a wedding's the same, you know, I mean, it's also about reserving, in my mind, both things are about renting the space, so to speak, of saying, okay, you're, you're taking your $500 for your wedding, and therefore, no one else can use that space today.
And I understand that, it is a reservation system, that, that's true, there's a fee associated with that. But again, I'm gonna ask you, what service is the city providing for that reservation to?
Well, for example.
Besides the fact that we're managing it.
Oh, and the beaches in the morning, like, they'll come through and they'll rake them, make sure they look, they're groomed for the next day, basically, and that goes into that.
There's administrative costs too, with processing everything.
Correct.
Yeah, but.
That's right. The other thing I assume, even with the bonfire, my understanding is you're only allowed two per street or something, right? So, there is an exclusivity of, oh, okay.
Two per street?
You're paying.
Yeah, you can't have like five bonfires.
I just wanted to raise that awareness.
I never had.
With my statement.
I want to.
And same for the dock, like, you know, dock rentals are about exclusivity, there's not, you know, there's only certain, so much frontage there, and, you know, there's a value to that.
So, you mentioned enforcement, and just a question, I don't wanna get too far into it, but who does the enforcement?
So, I actually have, I have her, have some people that have had parties down on West Canal that have people visited them, and they had too many more people than they have. So, like I said, it's a spatche, it happens occasionally. There were, you know, people from the city.
Could it be?
Or the police.
Well, I guess my question was, is this something that parking enforcement could do?
But.
Can they zip through and check?
Look, I've been in a bonfire, and that was July 4th years ago, not that long ago. And they just came by and everything was good. Hey, can we see your, your, your permit? And, you know, you're supposed to bring, and yeah, here's your permit, great. And it was just a signal, we weren't doing, that, hey, we're here, you know, because it's gonna be a crazy, busy night, and that kind of thing. I don't think most of the times, anyone is typically walking down there checking, unless there is a complaint.
Mm-hmm.
And then someone, and, you know, usually it's noise related.
And I think that's how that happens, Joe, to be honest with you, they're probably saying, oh, there's X number of cars on this, and there must be something going on, and so, you go down there, you check it out.
Yeah.
They hear a shotgun, fireworks in the air.
How about other revenues then? So, I'm glad we had that discussion around that one, and we got to a resolution.
Who cares about that?
Okay. Any others? And again, I'll comment, I think the permits to me make sense, but I think I will articulate. To me, there is a difference in getting a permit for like a roof replacement or a window replacement versus like a porch, you know, getting a new porch or an addition, so, not all permits are created equal, but I get it. I mean, you have to, you have to discuss where the money is, so, it's there.
And it's still based on what the person requesting the permit bases the market value of that cost? So, there is a, there is a balance that does occur?
Agreed.
Okay?
Well, I would just encourage in the future, as we look at these, that, you know, certain things that, like, luxury items, for example, maybe pool permit should have a higher permit fee than a roof replacement, for example.
Yeah, that's true.
So, there might be other ways.
I'll bring covering that to the finance committee.
Yeah, there might be other ways to skin a cat.
Yeah.
You know? So, that's, but again, I'm with Khalil, like, I think there's been enough rigor here that I'm, we're not gonna, you know, have filibuster here, and, you know. And it's, it's still minimal, you know, like, I think we're still within line at the 3% of neighboring communities, so I don't think they're gonna.
And I think, I think.
Stop building.
I think the stewardship committee, I mean, looked at this stuff pretty closely. And of course, their job was to kind of examine what other communities do, to see how we are, and they made certain changes. But our role is to understand that, hey, there's certain uniqueness about bonfires, for example, as opposed to other ones, and that's our job, is to make that decision. But they did their, their job very well, and, but that's why we're here.
Right.
Okay. No, I want to entertain a Lewis card. We could sell, like, we could sell cards to people in the, in the county part of Lewis.
Like, like, we'll make them residents if they donate a million dollars?
I don't know what those revenues is.
Right.
Okay, we'll move on, we'll move on. So, now expenditures, I don't think, are there, no one's looking to create new expenditures, are they?
Right, no.
Okay. So, no new expenditures. Are there any expenditures, other than the ones that we've discussed, that people wanna die on the sword?
I actually do wanna speak to one of the expenditures, and it was, came up during a recent meeting. And it came in the form of what I will describe as a proposal from a vendor. And it was the suggestion that, that there was remedial work that needed to be done for Block House Pond. And I, I think that we need to, we would be better served if we were actually advised by someone who actually studied the conditions there, not a vendor who would also be a provider of the service, or the remedy, but actually an outside consultant who would study that area, study the pond, and, and really advise us if there is in fact a, a need that we need to address.
Yeah.
And, and in my mind, it was very clear that, you know, what, what that meeting was about, and, and I'm not. I'm not comfortable with it at all.
Well, I think I heard some discussion about that yesterday, and we wanna make sure, I think there's some people might be concerned about the loss of the trees. I think we need to come to grips with that. That there may be other vendors out there that could help us. Not, well, some, I'll tell you, somebody referred to it as, it'll be looking like a levy when we're done, based upon that particular presentation, and we want it to look like a natural kind of setting.
So, you're asking for a second opinion, essentially?
That was a personal opinion that someone suggested.
A second opinion's not a bad idea, because it's gonna be such a, just a visual impact change in what was being proposed. So, getting somebody that would actually, I mean, if you take that presentation, the stormwater feature is collapsing upon itself. Okay, that's really what they're saying.
That's what they're, that's what they're advising.
So, let's get, let's get a third, a second opinion, because it's a signif, that project's gonna be a significant amount of money. Let's go ahead and get a second opinion on a, you know, environmental engineer to come in. Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I have an issue. I'm, I'm not, what I'm suggesting is that if there's anything in here allocating dollars for that project.
There is not, but we would need to add funding to get an engineer.
A study done, right.
And I, I would like to know, could that be referred?
You guys keep trying to have to be so small, right? It doesn't work both ways. You can't put your hand in the piggy bank and not feed the piggy.
Could we refer this to the environmental committee and ask them if they could study that?
I don't think so.
I don't, I think.
Also, remember the environmental subcommittee, that's why I'm saying, I think we need to thank it, celebrate it, and then at the end of this year, it ends, because it's sitting under the planning commission. So, this isn't their, this isn't their scope, okay? But, yes, we need to probably set up a resiliency committee, but right now, we should just get a second opinion of an environmental engineer. That's not a tough study to have to do. I mean, it's pretty straightforward, because we need to balance other approaches.
I'd like to know if there are, I've been to some of the parks in the area, and this undermining of trees and roots seems to me to be a very common thing. If you go out to Trap Pond, if you go out to the Turtle area, those areas are all, all those big root masses are all undermined by water hugely. It's not just a thing that's happening in Block Pond. It's, it's a natural thing that happens, given our soils and the way trees root along the edge of water. And so, I'm just wondering, are there other towns that have made some remediations on things like that, that we could reach out to?
I'm sure there, I'm sure there are, but remember that a natural occurring in a pond, in a nature setting, that all happens. But when you're relying it on part of your stormwater management system, it's taking on a different function, an additional function, okay? So, if we do that, we need to look at other communities. Wilmington, at Rascal yesterday presented some, where they are actually looking their stormwater management system. So, that pond is doing, it's doing more than just its beauty and its natural setting.
And I bring up the fact, and I'll bring it up again, is we have a, we have, the whole notion with BPW being in charge of stormwater. The stormwater fee is collected by them, and I've mentioned this before, should it go up? Should we be sharing and increasing that based upon square footage of properties? There are all kinds of models. I pay a tax on a stormwater fee in another area that is billed quarterly. And my home got a stormwater tax based upon the square footage and the unpermeable surface. So does the place that I still own there, and it's pretty hefty.
Why don't, why don't we ask the finance committee to look at those other kinds of things, like public safety fee? Things that we might have to be looking at in the future, those kind of things.
Well, it makes sense, because we're all using this stuff, and we need to, we talk about the resiliency fund, but I think there could be stormwater fees that are kind of a separate thing to manage things like our stormwater. It's a very unique area.
Well, it is a unique, I will bring up, this is not for today, but Amy, as you just referenced, the community of Lewis Beach pays a stormwater fee and has no stormwater management.
Correct, right, right.
And so, that's something, you know, that should be looked at.
Yep.
I think that might be a major thing to look at before we go forward. I think that would be.
And, and I would, and we talked, I mentioned it before, the possibility of a partnership with the BPW, if in fact Block House Pond is part of the stormwater management system that we have.
Right. Now, we have, in cooperation with BPW, as part of the grants team, and hopefully FEMA stays, there are a lot of ifs here. We actually, as one of our projects that we're working with on University of Delaware, that we're sending in in April, one of those projects is, is Block House Pond. Because we, we wanted to, Ellen Rainwater and I, and we wanted to get it in, not necessarily that we're taking the approach of what was presented to us, but that is something they fund. They fund restoration of stormwater management assets. So, I just want you to know that, I mean, there's no guarantee we get it, lots of ifs, but in fact, we are thinking ahead on the grants team to look for funding for future things that we need.
Can we ask that, that this be put on the agenda at our next BPW joint meeting?
We can ask them, I forget how we, I forget where we netted out on how it should.
I think it'd be good. We might as well start.
Yeah, we can ask.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to start the conversation while the ball's rolling.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because they did raise their stormwater management fees, but I think that they also have said recently that it still doesn't cover.
Right.
What they need.
Right.
Okay. The other one, I guess, was, I want a clarification, was the, the half payment on the trash truck. So, how does that trick, so, it's in there, but what trigger, like, is there an idea that there's a reporting out of approving in of the purchase of the truck? Is that why it's not in there as a whole?
So, one, the purchasing environment, whenever a trash truck is ordered, a vehicle of that size is ordered, they obviously want some money put down, so that's what that is doing, and then when we receive it, the balance will be paid. The important part is to say that there's an efficiency study being done of that, and so, any purchase would not take place prior to the results of that study coming out.
Even the deposit, or the?
Correct, there would be no.
So, it's just in there, if the, if the study says, yeah, you're gonna need another truck, it goes in? If it says, we could wait another year, it comes out?
And I kind of questioned that from the start, because we talk about these transferring of funds after the year started. I don't even know why it's there, because it's a placeholder. If we don't spend it, it's still there. So, why are you even putting it in? So, what I would be saying is, if we find that we need that, we, we basically do a budget transfer, and we pay for it that way. Why are you putting money in the budget that doesn't need to be there if we're not gonna need it? It's just raising the amount of money we need. It's, it doesn't make sense. You take it out of the bank when you need it, and we have the ability to do that. So, we know we're studying it, and I thought that was a more prudent way of handling it.
Mm-hmm. Right.
That is a way that we could, I think, you know, depending on which vendors we can get a truck from, which vendors are accepting orders, we may be limited on time.
Right, but do we have any idea about the, when the efficiency study will be started, and when that will be, we can expect that to be before?
We have, we've had initial discussions, and Rick and his team are starting to gather information, and Mike will be back, and we wanna go out and work with them closely on this. And I don't know when we'd be able to finish it up. What do you think, Rick? Do you think we can get it done in two, a couple months?
He's not back till April, so we, that's when our next meeting's gonna be, when he gets back.
Well, we, we could maybe even do some work in the meantime to help him.
Well, we're getting, we're gathering what he requested in the meeting, but.
Okay. But either way, if they're gonna need a truck, and we find that they need a truck, I would say that we should go in and access those funds when we need them. I don't know that you need to have 150K aside. I, I don't know.
Well, sometimes, when you put together a budget and you're aware that there is a high probability of a cost, it's prudent to put it in your budget. In this case, not spend it, but put it in your budget. In this case, because we've heard from Rick and from our city manager, that we'll miss opportunities. It's, it's an industry that you have to put a deposit down to, to get these trucks. We thought, the finance committee thought it was prudent to put it in, because it's a high likelihood we might need some other truck. They've been asking for this for prior years, and they've been trying to keep everything prepared. So, that's the reason you saw the finance committee pull it out. Yes, it, it could just be in the operating fund, absolutely, but the fact is, there's a timing issue to be able to put that deposit down.
One of the things that we discussed so far in this, in this meeting that we've had is that perhaps our replacement schedule isn't aggressive enough, and that it should be a five-year rotation on our trucks. And so, we wanted to look at that whole piece. Mike was actually involved in purchasing, and they, they managed over 80 trucks, so.
Finance committee wants to look at next year a fleet study, so they wanna work with the chief, they wanna work with facilities to look at all of our fleet, to, which is, because it's, it's a significant capital outlay. So, not just maintenance, they wanna look at all of it to make recommendations.
And, and I guess the, the point was, and I don't know if this is where you're going, are we putting the cart before the horse?
No, no, I just was wondering the trigger, yeah, like, what, if it's happening, or what triggers the?
Disbursement.
Yeah, the dispersment. I actually don't have a problem with that approach, which is a, there is a potential that this might get spent, so let's put it in, it's, you know, it's saving for it, and then if you don't, so then it becomes something available somewhere to you somewhere else.
Either way, if they need it, we've gotta access the funds, one way or another. It's just a matter of how you wanna place it in the budget.
So, you would expect a decision on that, so like summer, basically, once the?
I would probably say yes, mid to end of summer.
All right. Any other discussion then of expenditures? Okay. So, why don't you, yeah, go ahead.
One more thing. I do wanna make sure that included in the expenditure for the. One more thing. I do wanna make sure that included in the expenditure for the Second Street sidewalk repairs, that the, the city enters into a maintenance agreement, so that we're cap, you know, we're needing, we're gonna capitalize the repairs, but that we are committing also to an annual maintenance contract. So that, in the future, hopefully, we won't have these, you know, this kind of expense, this budget that you expect each to maintain the pavers.
On Second Street?
On Second Street.
That are really being prompted by the trees, roots.
There's some of that, but there's also settlement that's occurred.
Right.
And, yeah, so there's, it's not been, it's not being maintained, and it needs to be.
Just holding it together.
Right. Yeah. Right.
I'll make sure that's included in the budget.
Of gum chewing.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much.
Ellen Rainier, is that a separate vendor that will do that?
They allow that in Singapore.
Is that, because...
Yes.
You chew gum. You spit out your gum.
The reason, I, the only thing on Second Street that I would say that that vendor could look at, the sizing for the trees is small. And that is part of the reason, that's part of the problem. And many cities have recognized that, even though the selection of the trees was right, those, those are urban. The fact is, if you can give those trees a little more room, they actually buckle with knees around appropriately, and they stay in their cage, in a sense. We've made it so tight, that's part of the problem that's occurring. So, I would just say, in your point on maintenance, I'd have them look at that again, because I don't think this is gonna be the first time we're gonna have this problem.
No, I don't think so either.
And so, maybe, you know, 10 pavers taken out might be the best use of funds, to not have to spend so much money in the future.
So, the possibility of re, a modest redesign at the tree, what I call the tree box area?
I agree. Yeah.
Yeah.
It might be prudent to do that.
Yeah. And going, yeah, well, that's, I'll hold that statement for some other time.
So, in terms of Monday, then, you'll, I guess, why don't you tell us, what do you, what do you expect from us on Monday? Then, just, but you have a budget, and like I said, the, that's it. We're basically, we're approving a finalized excel.
So, we have a final budget, and where it says draft, it'll say final. But then, I will walk through with council and the public, what's changes and what changed from the draft version to the final version that's before them.
And can you also use the memo that you first initiated? Because we're getting now into line item, but that memo describes our philosophy of budget, okay? And I think that's gonna be really important for the public to hear.
I think it needs to be top line, what you're, you know, as, as Amy said, you know, the theory, the, the vision behind the budget is important, short-term, long-term.
Yeah. I also, I just wanna reiterate that I really like this sheet, and I think we need to keep filling it in with more detail, because this is, these are our goals. The, you can look at these as our long-term goals. This is kind of a vision to how we're gonna get all this stuff done, a part of it.
Right. And just be mindful that those have not been proven in.
Exactly.
Or accepted by anyone.
Right.
Right? They've not been proven in by GMB.
Right. But today, we just, we just...
It's a roadmap.
Made, gave credence to two areas.
I understand. I understand. Right.
So, we continue to groom this thing, and voila, we have our roadmap.
Right.
Anything else? Okay. So, do we need to, do we need to move into executive session?
Yes, please.
Yeah, but before we do that, Blue, anyone online? Bill, Mike says, please specify this year, next year, fiscal year, or 2026. So, we are in 20...
So, we're currently in FY '25. March 31 of this year, we will conclude FY '25. The budget will be for FY '26, which begins April 1 of 2025.
Okay.
Through March 31, 2026.
Right.
All right. Anyone from the audience? Bill? Yeah, come on up.
What's, what is the floodgate project? That was a little bit before my comments.
Yeah, good point. So, there's, you know, the berm area over where the spoil site is for the dredging. So, there, that's an area that, near California Avenue, water comes across the marsh. And so, this would be an idea of how you might shore that up. And it involves, cause what happens is sometimes you, you miss a tide cycle, so the water stays. And so, these, the idea here is that these floodgates would, would go down, so that if you missed a flood cycle, it wouldn't put more water out onto the island, and it would keep it this side of the...
So, it's an actual gate?
Right.
Yeah. It's not a berm, it's not a...
Not an actual, physical gate.
But not like you're seeing on these, it's not like at Roosevelt Inlet where you're, it's a flood, you know, a tide gate that opens like this. These are these sort of small flapper valves, so to speak.
Okay.
That's actually a good description, the flapper.
That's a very good description.
A flapper. Yeah.
Okay.
To get that, keep that reverse flow.
Yeah. And the other question I have about the resiliency fund at this point, having to go through the charter change process for supermajority and things like that, does that threaten to delay the implementation of this in any way, or...
I don't see it that way. I think what, the reason for the charter change is, cause as our astute solicitor pointed out, we can have the supermajority, but any of these things could be repealed by simple majority. So, having a supermajority, so putting in the, in the charter is the more permanent solution. It doesn't allow this, cause this council has goodwill.
Right.
I think what you're trying to protect against is a future council coming and saying, you know, three of us wanna get rid of this thing.
Right. What I mean is, having to go through this process, plus the public hearing. Now, that's just so people can have an input in how you actually implement it, correct?
Yeah. And if they point out something that's, that's earthmoving, then, yeah, maybe you pull the whole thing. But we don't anticipate that. It's more for, you know, I would think suggestions. And, you know, sure, you might get some people that say, I, I don't support this initiative at all. That, that might happen. But I think what we've found over the, the last few years, when Cleo was part of the Resiliency Committee, this came as a recommendation, is resiliency isn't just about what happens when there's a storm. And, you know, there are projects, such as Block House and others, that will, you know, benefit the entirety of the community.
But I guess my broader question is, once, once you approve it as part of this budget, that, that fund is now in place, and it's just a matter of how you implement it from there on, right?
Yeah.
Nothing's gonna actually...
And that's what I mean, yeah. Under the current council, that nothing should get delayed, because there's goodwill and there's agreement there. I think the reason you'd put into the charter is just for 20 years from now, when it's, it's still, a resiliency fund is still a thing, and...
The other reason you put in the charter is, just as the mayor's saying, it, you know, we're all in goodwill and, and agreement. As that fund grows, a city could want to borrow against it, okay? That's, the supermajority protects not only our strategic direction, but when, we don't want that to look like, oh, that's how we're gonna balance our operating of the city. So, you're protecting that fund to say, because it's gonna get large at some point. And that's the worry. That's the worry, is that it looks like an easy target for reallocation.
Right. Okay. And these are dedicate, will become dedicated funds.
That someday a future council could say, we need a fund for something else, and wait, we have the resiliency fund to draw from.
That's right.
Would make it more difficult for them to be able to do that.
I think we have an example at the federal level, it's called Social Security.
Which we routinely, which we routinely raid that quote-unquote lockbox all the time.
Yeah, exactly. We're not gonna do that, right?
Right. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Okay.
Cleo, can I use that as a quote?
Anyone else?
Yeah.
All right. So, I'm gonna make, can I ask for a motion to move into executive session?
How do we move into executive session?
Thank you, Tim. I'll second that.
Counselor Neller, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.